The Book of Amos, Chapter 4. Amos, Chapter 4. The title of my message this evening is Prepare... Prepare to Meet Thy God. Prepare to Meet Thy God. Did you know that every one of us are all of a sudden gonna be in His presence? In judgment? We're gonna be in His presence in judgment. It's called the Judgment Seat of Christ. We are gonna stand before God. Picture this. Dan Knickerbocker. I'm standing before the Lord. And I'm gonna have to give account of myself to God. I want you to remember that as we go through this message. I don't know about you, but I don't wanna be embarrassed when I stand before the Lord.
Amen.
I don't wanna be thinking about all the things I should have done. Because it'll be too late. In Amos, Chapter 4, I want to begin in verse 6. Now I'm gonna see, you're gonna see a statement that is used five times. And I want you to get this statement and may it be drilled deep into your heart. Watch closely. Get your pen out. I want you to take notes. Here we go. Number 1. "And I also have given you cleanness of teeth in all your cities and want a bread in all your places." Notice this, "yet." Here it is.[136.32][136.63]"Have ye not returned unto me," sayeth the Lord." So he pronounces that he has provided for them and they have not returned unto the Lord. Okay? Look at verse 8. "So two or three cities wandered unto one city to drink water; but they were not satisfied. Yet have ye not..." What?
Returned.
"...returned unto me," sayeth the Lord. Number 9, or verse 9. Number 3. Here we go. "I have smitten you with blasting and mildew when your gardens and your vineyards and your fig trees and your olive trees..." What?
Increased.
"...they increased. The palmer worm devoured them; yet have ye not..." What?
Returned.
"...returned unto me," sayeth the Lord. You didn't return unto me. You got away from me and you stayed away from me and you did not return unto me. Go with me to verse 10. "I have sent among you the pestilence after the manor of Egypt; your young men have I slain with a sword and have taken away your horses; and I have made the stink of your camps to come up into your nostrils." Here it is. What does it say? "Yet have ye not returned unto me," sayeth the Lord. "I have overthrown some of you as God overthrew Sodom and Gomorrah; and ye were as a firebrand plucked out of the burning." Here it is. Number 5. "Yet have ye not..." What?
Returned.
"...returned unto me," sayeth the Lord. Here's my text, verse 12. "Therefore thus will I do unto thee, O Israel; and because I will do this unto thee..." Read it with me.
Prepare to meet thy God.
O Israel. And I say to all of you, and I say to myself, it is time for us to prepare to meet God.
Amen.
If you knew, if you knew that you were gonna stand before God in one month from now, the rapture was going to take place. One month, 30 days, I can guarantee you, you would not miss church. I'm not kidding. I can guarantee you that you would talk to people about the Lord like you've never talked to people about the Lord. You wouldn't be able to keep your mouth shut. 30 days, I'm leaving. And you need to get saved. And you need to get saved. And you need to get saved. You would have boldness like you've never had before. If you knew that in 30 days you are gonna stand before the Lord again in your life. I don't believe you'd, you'd sin at all in 30 days hardly. How many of you agree with that? You probably would quit watching TV.
Wouldn't have time.
You'd probably even get off your phone. You might even call some people up and apologize. All the bitterness in your heart would be gone. You would probably spend time alone with God in prayer and you would read the Bible like crazy. If you knew in 30 days you were gonna be standing before the Lord. And you know what's really sad? Some of you won't go to heaven. If you're not saved.
I am saved.
Amen?
Yeah, I know I am saved.
Amen?
I know where I'm going.
How many of you believe you're saved?
Yeah. Where I'm going.
Okay, so you got that settled?
I got my ticket.
That's good. That's good. That's real good. If you're not sure, you need to get it taken care of tonight. Amen?
Amen.
Alright. Now with that in mind, I want to show you from God's Word how you can receive some crowns from the Lord. Okay? Let me, let me tell you something. The Queen's Crown. Wasn't it Queen Victoria that said she hoped that Jesus would come before she died? So that she could lay her crown at Jesus' feet? Is that beautiful?
Yeah, it is beautiful.
And I'll tell you, the Queen that just passed away, it's believed that she really knew Jesus as his.
Yes, she did.
But I'm gonna tell you something. I don't care how rich she was. I don't care how many beautiful palaces she lived in. To know Jesus is better than all of that.
Amen.
What shall a prophet demand if he gained the whole world and loses his own soul? So if you really wanna prepare to meet God, you better get your ticket. And that's Jesus Christ and Him alone. Now, if you're saved, if you know the Lord Jesus Christ as your Savior, the Lord is watching us right now. He said we're two or three are gathered together in My name. There am I in the midst. Thank you, Jesus, for joining us tonight.
Amen.
And in His presence is fullness of joy.
Amen.
And He wants us to know that when we walk through this Christian life, that we can live for Christ, get victory over the nonsense of sin, and get to the place where we are living the spirit-filled life so that we can earn crowns. I've heard people say this. "My prayer is that I could lay down my crowns at Jesus' feet." As I receive my reward, if I get one of those crowns or all five of those crowns, I want to take them and lay them at Jesus' feet and say to Him, "I couldn't have done it without you." Amen. If He hadn't saved us, there'd be no crowns to give to Him. Alright, we're gonna go on a little journey. I want you to write down the names of these crowns. Number 1. The Crown of Victory.
Amen.
Go with me to 1 Corinthians, Chapter 9. 1 Corinthians, Chapter 9. I want you to see these verses because they're very important for you to remember. Write down the reference if you could. 1 Corinthians, Chapter 9, verse 24. "Know ye not that they which run in a race run all; but one receiveth the prize?" "One receiveth the prize? So run, that ye may obtain; and every man that strident for the mastery..." That means being a master at living for Jesus is temperant in all things. "For they do it to obtain a corruptible crown, but we an incorruptible crown."
Amen.
The world lives, now you know this. There are people all over this world that are, that are living for materialism. That's their God. Our God is not materialism. Because materialism is corruptible. Right? Right? Everything you own is gonna burn. It's gonna burn one day. And you can't take it with you. Right?
Amen.
So everything that we possess, other than our salvation, is going to live forever. So how do I obtain an incorruptible crown? By running the race that God has set before me. That I may obtain that incorruptible crown. Did you know the Christian life is a race? It's a race. It's a race against the devil. Amen? Get behind me, Satan. I'm running the race that's set before me. The Bible says neither give place to the devil. Don't you sit around and, and negotiate with the devil. And don't, don't get around ungodly people and, and try to be their friend. No, try to lead them to Jesus Christ. But stay focused on what God's called you to do.
Amen.
Keep your life clean. Don't do anything that if Jesus was standing right there, you'd be ashamed. Run the race. It's a victory, crown. Did you hear what Jesus said? When we stand before Him one day, He's gonna say one of two things. "Well done. Well done, my good and faithful servant." Or to the lost at the great white throne judgment, He'll say, "I never knew you." "I never knew you." Now doesn't God know all things? What He's saying is, "You never knew Me. Therefore I never knew you. You never were part of My family." I'm gonna tell you something. The Lord takes care of His kids.
Amen.
And He loves us. And He's told us to run the race that is set before. Looking then to Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith.
Amen.
You've gotta keep your eyes on the Lord. They, they say about farmers, you know? When you're plowing, you better set your eye on something and go right to it.
That's right.
A nice straight furrow.
Always have a doggy.
Amen. Did you know that we're to keep, we're to walk on the straight and narrow? The Bible says, "Wide is the way that leadeth into destruction, and many there be that go in the rat; narrow is the way and straight is the gate that leadeth into everlasting life, and few there be that find it." So we must run. We must keep running. Don't ever quit. You, you're gonna get tired sometimes. You're not gonna wanna come to church. You're not gonna wanna read your Bible. You're not gonna wanna pray. But you know what? When you think about that Crown of Victory, it'll motivate you. It'll motivate you. Spend time with the Lord when you're at your best in the day. Now, some of you may not do too good in the morning, but you're, how many are early to bed, early to rise people? Okay, alright. How many are late to bed? Late to get up? See how, see how we're all different? You need to find the time that you're mentally at your best. And that is the time you spend with God.
Amen.
Amen. And the Bible says pray without ceasing, so you can do that too. Always be praying. Quit complaining. Start praising God. Thank you, Lord, for another day that I can breathe. Thank you, that I've got a church I can go to. Thank, you've got a hundred things you could thank the Lord for. And He helped me think about a couple stupid things that, that interfere with our Christian life and we go to, we get depressed and everything. That's not running the race. That's sitting down and pouting. We can't do that in the race. Man, we are reaching a goal, and that is to please the Lord. Give the first crown, the crown, the incorruptible crown, the Crown of Victory. Number 2, the Rejoicing Crown. Oh, I love this one. I love this crown. Go with me to the book of 1 Thessalonians, Chapter 2. 1 Thessalonians, Chapter 2. Chapter 2, verse 19. "For what is your hope or joy or crown of rejoicing? Are not even ye in the presence of our Lord Jesus Christ that is coming? For ye are our glory and joy." Paul is speaking here under the inspiration of the Spirit, and he is saying to the church of Thessalonica, "You people are our glory and our joy." Why? Because their hope and their joy and their crown of rejoicing was in place. Now let me, let me, let me say something to you about this.
What verse is that?
Verse 19. 2:19.
1 Thessalonians, Chapter 2.
Verse 19. I want you to understand that not all the time are you getting good news. I'll never forget the day my mother was, was killed in a non-mobile accident. Okay? And I made the wrong choice in what I said. And I'll admit it. My brother called me and he said, "Mom," I said, "are you," he said, "are you sitting down?" I said, "Dad, daddy, did me." He said, "No. Mom was killed in a T-bone accident." She flipped, she didn't have a seatbelt on. She flipped right upside down and broke her neck. Gone. Do you know what I said? You know what I said? To myself? "Why didn't God take some stinking bum off the street? Why didn't He take my mother?" Was that the right reaction? Basically, what I was doing was blaming God that He did not protect my mother. Now I'm gonna tell you something. Every one of us can think wrong thoughts and do wrong deeds and blame it on something that happens that God allowed to happen. So I went up into the bedroom. I'm really grieving over this. My mother was such a sweetheart. I couldn't have asked for a better mother. Mom and Dad, every day prayed for us boys and our grandchildren and my, my mother called Anne Marie, my daughter in love.
Amen.
She never called her daughter-in-law.
No.
She called her daughter in love. Anytime I called her, she said, "I prayed for you today." My mother always, when I called her, she said, "I prayed for you today, damn it." I took that picture of my mother and my father and I looked into my mother's eyes. You know what the Holy Spirit said? "Would you wish her back to the sin-cursed earth?" I asked you a question. Would you wish her back to a sin-cursed earth?
No.
And all of a sudden, I'm telling you, all of a sudden, the grace of God came over me and at that moment I began to rejoice that she was in the presence of the Lord.
Amen.
She was home.
And I never looked back. I've never, ever looked back. I failed that race, didn't I, at that moment? When I said the wrong thing. But does the Lord forgive us when we do the wrong thing?
Yeah.
You think the Lord forgave you for that? I asked Him to. I said, "Lord, I am so sorry. I reacted in the flesh instead of the spirit." Every one of us have a problem with reacting in the flesh.
Yeah.
Don't we? I don't care how long you've been saved.
That's right.
You're a stinker sometimes. You're just like me. Yeah. We'll get mad about something and we'll pout about something and we'll, we'll blame God. But our God loves us so much that He'd even forgive us if we're sorry. Where's the sorrow in Christians' lives?
Yeah.
Where's the tears of repentance? Where's the getting on the altar and saying, "Oh God, I'm not getting up from this altar until you help me." Many Christians never even come to the altar. I wish I had time to preach that message. This is sacred ground.
Amen.
That's the church altar. That belongs to you. That's the church pew. Cheryl, got her pew? She sits there every time? We're creatures of heaven, aren't we? You always sit there. You, you, you've been sitting there every time you've been in the house of God, right? Right, right where you're sitting. That's your, that's your spot.
I moved here.
That's your pew. Hey, now don't you, if somebody, if you come in late and somebody's sitting in your pew, don't go over and say, "You need to move. That's my pew." No, you ask the Lord to forgive you if you go sit down someplace.
Yes, yes.
But this is the Crown of Rejoicing. We cannot allow ourselves to be depressed or discouraged or defeated, casting all your care upon Him. If I cast my care upon Him, I'm not gonna be depressed and discouraged and defeated. I'm not gonna be out of church, I can tell you that. That, that would be the first place I would go if I was discouraged. Is to go to the house of God. Don't give the devil a moment of your life by pouting or complaining. Listen, we need to be careful. We need to be careful that when something comes into our life, we learn how to handle it. I don't understand why some things happen, but I'm not gonna blame God and I'm not gonna be bitter about it.
Yeah.
I heard of a fellow that no, it was a woman. Her, her, um, half of, or it was her and her sister. Both received an inheritance of their parents, but the one sister stole the inheritance from her other sister. Okay? She got all of it. And you know what that woman said to me? She said, "You know what? I don't have to, that, I don't have to have that inheritance. Cause I've got great memories of my mother.
Amen.
And my sister's in big trouble." Right?
Yes, yes.
So you need to turn it around and use it for God's glory. Number 3. The third crown is found in James, Chapter 1. Go with me there.
Amen.
Just a few pages over. Hebrews, James, Chapter 1. Verse 12. You ready? James, Chapter 1 and verse 12. "Blessed is the man that endureth temptation; for when he is tried, he shall receive the crown of life, which the Lord hath promised to them to love him." Did you know that if you had victory over temptation, you're gonna get the crown of what?
Life.
Life.
That's exciting to me. How many of you are tempted? Every one of us? Tempted all the time? You know what? I like it when I have victory over temptation.
Amen.
Don't you? There's a sweet joy and peace that comes when you know that you turned down that temptation and you did the right thing. You know, I don't know about you, but we had a lady in our church one time. My wife said, "If I ever act like her, shoot me." Can you imagine that? She said, "Pastor, I wanna tell you something." She said, "She said, "One thing about me is you won't have to wonder what I'm thinking about because I'm gonna tell ya." You know, Abe Lincoln had somebody say that to him one time. And, and he said, "Well, the only problem with you telling everybody off is you're like dynamite. You blow everything to smithereens." You know, it's good to keep your mouth shut. You can't get in trouble when your mouth is shut. But boy, you open it up and you can make a mess.
Oh yeah.
What's he saying here? "Don't allow yourself to be tempted." You're gonna be tempted. But say no to the temptation.
Amen.
"I'm not gonna respond because I know it won't please the Lord." And you know what? You, you know, you know, you know what your opinion is? It's not worth much.
Nope.
If you were to ask me what I think about something, if you don't like what I say, wouldn't it be better if I never said it?
Yep, yes.
Wouldn't it? Sure. Why? Because everybody has their own philosophy of life and, and what I may think, it's like our taste buds. Now I, I was talking earlier about, I was talking about raspberry rhubarb pie with ice cream. And some of them put their nose up. I tried to give some good pastors, I think she wouldn't take it. And I was just even offended because I really wanted to eat it all myself. As everybody has different tastes, everybody else has different, different ideas. So we've gotta be careful what we say because we could hurt people. And you wanna be able to rejoice. You want people to know that you're happy in the Lord, not going grump.
No.
Amen? You want people to know that, that, that Jesus Christ is helping you to live the Christian life and you're happy all the time. I think we oughta practice that. Don't you? Wouldn't you love to receive the Crown of Rejoicing?
Yes.
Amen? It's called the Crown of Life. Let's go to the Crown of Righteousness. Go with me to 2 Timothy, Chapter 4. We're almost done. 2 Timothy, Chapter 4. Don't get in a rush now. 2 Timothy, Chapter 4. I wanna take you to verse 8. Henceforth, you know, Paul said, "I fought a good fight. I have finished my course. I've kept the faith." you know, Paul said, "I fought a good fight, I have finished my course, I've kept the faith." Henceforth, verse eight, "There is laid up for me a crown of what?"
Rejoice, righteousness.
Righteousness. Crown of righteousness. You know what the crown of righteousness is? I've been righteous instead of unrighteous. You remember my message I preached about the comparison between righteousness and unrighteousness? Do you know what your biggest job is as a Christian? Is to stay clean and righteous before God. Don't let anything happen in your life that you would be responsible for getting dirty, spirit getting dirty with sin. Keep your life clean, squeaky clean. That means that, you know, after you wash your hair with shampoo, and you can still, like, you go, and it'll squeak. How many know what I'm talking about? We call that squeaky clean. And, you know, and when you, when you keep your life clean, you're going to be very happy. You're going to be making all the right decisions. Amen?
Yes.
I know it's like to make wrong decisions. How many know what it's like to make wrong decisions? Isn't it neat to make right decisions?
Amen.
Yeah. How can you make right decisions? Let me give you, let me give you the answer to that. Don't do anything unless you prayed about it.
Amen.
Amen. Say, "Lord, should I say something right now?" And the Lord will go, "No."
Amen.
No. Right? There are times you're supposed to speak up. Should I say anything? Yes. You can help somebody. When you see a person that's discouraged, I think we have a right and a responsibility to encourage.
Amen.
I rejoice the fact that you people have come to this meeting. First-time visitors, it's exciting. I'm so glad you came.
Amen.
We had visitors last night. Amen. And I didn't know where those people stood before the Lord, that couple that came last night. But they thanked me for my message.
Amen.
I, I've had people not thank me for my message. Some messages hurt. You know why? Because we're not right with God. Am I your enemy? Am I your enemy? Because I tell you the truth, Paul said to the church of Galatia. I didn't like what he said. Well, you know what? It's all how you take it. Right? If somebody said, "You know what, my partner, you are really ugly." I'd say, "I've known that for years." I cannot believe, I can't believe God made me look like this.
I know.
And I, I, I can't apologize, because this is the way God made me. But thank you for the compliment. You can turn everything around for righteousness, and, and for joy, and for happiness, and rejoicing. We don't have to be a defeated fellow. And if Paul was willing to say, "I have fought a good fight, and I have finished my course, and I've kept the faith," you can be sure he's going to get the crown of righteousness. And then, number five. The crown of glory. Oh, this one's real good. Go to 1 Peter 5. 1 Peter 5. You remember Peter, the denier of the Lord? Do you remember him? 1 Peter, chapters five. Did you know the Lord forgave him? Just like the Lord forgave you. How many times has the Lord forgiven you?
More times than I can count.
Every tiny minute. Yes, that's a lot. How, you know, the Bible says, "Judge not, must he be judged." "For with what judgment he judges, he shall be judged again." So, you, you, we must understand that, that if you're a big judge, you know it all. Guess who's going to get the most judgment? You are. It's better not to judge people, really, honestly. Because you know what? You don't even know what people are going through. And sometimes, my wife and I could be guilty of this. Sometimes, we don't have all the, all the story. We don't understand what's going on in people's lives. And sometimes, we judge them, and we do, we shouldn't have. God's the judge. Not us. And so, what do you do? Instead of judging, not pray for them. Just pray for them. "Lord, help them." They said something that wasn't nice to me. But it's no big deal. I, I, yeah. I'm not going to think about it again. Not going to worry about it. Let's go to 1 Peter 5. Look with me there at verse one. "The elders which are among you I exhore, who are, who am also an elder, and a witness of the sufferings of Christ, and also a partaker of the glory that shall be revealed." I'm a partaker of the glory that shall be revealed. "Feed the flock of God, which is among you, taking the oversight thereof, not by constraint, but willingly, not for filthy lucre, but of a ready mind. Neither be lords over God's heritage, but being examples to the flock." I want you to notice here that he says that we are partakers of the glory that shall be revealed. The glory, the glory of God. I'm going to experience the glory of God when I get to heaven. I want you to think about this. Can you imagine seeing the one you've prayed to all these years?
Yeah.
The glory. There's going to be no sickness, no sorrow, no tears, no crying in heaven. It's going to be the perfect place. And you know what we're going to do? We're going to spend eternity glorifying and praising God.
Amen.
The crown of glory. Partakers of the glory of God. I don't know about you, but I really want to work now at preparing for them. Do you understand that? And I'm, I'm going to tell you something that bothers me, because I have been an evangelist now for, Ian and I have been evangelists 23 years pastoring in one church. We're in our 23rd year of evangelism. That means pretty much every week, I'm in a different church. I have seen thousands of people. And you know what I've seen? I've seen a lot of Christians that I wonder if they're going to get any crowns when they stand before the Lord. My dad made a statement one time. He said, and I don't know if it's true or not, but he said, "Some people are going to get into heaven by the skin of their teeth. They're going to barely get in." They did believe on the Lord Jesus Christ, and Jesus saved them, but they had no rewards once they get there. I don't want to be like them.
Amen.
And I'm going to tell you something. My wife and I go from church to 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 church. And I've never figured it out exactly, Pastor, but maybe one out of every 10 is on fire for God.
Oh, that's so sad.
It's difficult. It's difficult.
That's why we need to pray for him.
Yeah, you know what? I've been to some churches where the pastor, I said, "Where was so-and-so? Oh, they didn't like what you said."
Excuse me?
So, they, they're not coming back?
Oh, that, no.
That means they're not teachable. Now, I'm not the perfect pastor, and yes, I will offend somebody, there's no doubt in my mind, but where is the love for God and the desire to get right with God?
Amen.
Why, why are we so stuck in a rut that we can't change? We've got to prepare to meet God. And I'll tell you the best way to do it. Is to get out of your prayer bones. That's what my dad used to say. One day, my dad said, "Pull your pant leg up, and let me see if there's any hair on your, on your knee here." He said, "If you're praying like you want, there ought to be no hair there." I, I, in fact, I've heard of preachers that had calluses on their knees. Because every day, they got down on their knees and they talked to God. I want to ask you. What are you going to do to prepare to meet God? What's going to change in your life starting tonight? So that when you stand before God, you're not going to be embarrassed? Are you going to start opening the Word of God and getting something from it?
Amen.
Are you going to find yourself praying to God? If you can't get out of your knees, sit and talk to Him. Walk, walk with God and talk to Him. Amen? Every day? Try to tell somebody about Jesus every day. Prepare it. Talk to your family. I'm going to raise both of my hands, one for my wife and one for me. How many of you have family members that are not where they should be spiritually? Why aren't we weeping over them? The Bible says, "They that sow in tears shall reap in joy."
Amen.
We only weep when we don't get our own way. We only weep when something bad happens to us. Why shouldn't we be more concerned about people that are going to hell than about our little petty life? Yeah. So, spend time with God. Talk to people about the Lord. Get used to being in your own pew. Amen? And say, "Oh, God, help me to get all I can." This preacher gets up and preaches. You need to hear every message he preaches. You say, "Well, what was that statement that you, that we read on, on Facebook about church attendance? Do you remember what it was?"
Yeah.
Do you remember it, amen? Go ahead.
Church ought to be the excuse to miss everything else.
Yes.
Did you hear that?
Yes.
You need to write that down. Church is, ought to be the excuse you use to turn everything else down.
To miss everything else, yes.
To miss everything, what?
I can't go there because I got to church.
I get to go to church.
I have, I'm going to church.
I'm going, I'm going. Isn't that good?
I'm going to miss the Super Bowl, but I'm going to church.
Exactly. Now, you can dig out of the Super Bowl for me. Right? I mean, there's so many things that we can, we can work around these things. But why would we make it where God's last? Now, I want to tell you something, folks. How many hours does, how many, I, I don't want to get into another message, and I must stop. I must stop. The Lord's telling me to stop, and he wants me to say one more thing. You have 168 hours a week. If you go Sunday school, morning worship, Sunday night, Wednesday night, you're talking about, I'm going to put in five hours. Five hours of 168 hours? Is that too much to ask Christians to do?
That's not even a tithe.
You're like, right, exactly. Exactly. If you do a tithe on that, you owe the Lord 16 hours. Wow. Now, I'm not going there. I don't want to make you mad tonight, are you all? I want us to pray, I want us to pray. Every head bowed, every eye closed. If you're not sure you're going to heaven, we can take the Bible and show you how to be saved. And I would encourage you tonight to just look out of your seat and just come up to me and say, "Brother Michael Bacher, I need to be saved. How do I go to hell? I want Jesus to forgive me of my sin and be my savior." If you know you need to do that, and you want to do that, as she begins to play a verse of song, I want you to just get out of your seat and come up to me. I'll even meet you halfway. And we'll get someone to show you from the Bible how you can be saved. Is there anyone that needs to do that? Anyone that needs to do that, you come and do it right now.